The June 12th City of Belavista Planning Commission meeting, call the roll please.
Portillo?
Here.
He's center.
Klessen?
Here.
Dool?
Here.
Farner?
Here.
Ellis?
Here.
Floyd?
Here.
All right, I show that we have a quorum. Next on our agenda is our regular meeting minutes from May 8.
I make a motion to be approved and submitted.
Motion from Farner?
Second.
Second from Portillo, all in favor?
Aye.
Any votes? All right, meeting minutes are approved. Next up is our public input session. Is there anybody in the public that would like to address the planning commission concerning any unpublished item? We will conduct a public hearing for all of our other items. Scene nine, I'll go ahead and close the public input session. Next up, we have under unfinished business, our dockside ordinance change and proposal to amend section 109, 185 with intent to remove the restriction of one dock per parcel and striking subsection D. Ms. Ortman?
Thank you. At the request of the planning commission, staff is proposing an amendment to the dockside improvement section of code to strike subsection letter D, which restricts the number of dockside improvements allowed per parcel. City staff have worked in collaboration with community stakeholders to evaluate shoreline improvements to ensure appropriate development patterns that support the purpose and policies of the code. Since this is a chapter 109 amendment, a public hearing is required. Staff notes for the record, the public hearing for this amendment was conducted on April 10th, 2023. No additional public comments have been received by staff in the interim. I have nothing further to add this time.
All right, are there any questions for staff? All right, do we need to go ahead and conduct another public hearing on this one? We don't even need to conduct a public hearing on this one. This is an ordinance change, so we just need a motion to recommend this on the city council for approval.
I make a motion, we forward this onto city council for approval.
Got a motion from Portillo?
Second.
Second from Lloyd, if you call the roll please.
Farner?
Yes.
Klessen?
Yes.
Portillo?
Yes.
Dool?
Yes.
Floyd?
Yes.
Ellis?
Yes. We will send that on the city council for consideration. Next up, we have zoning variance request 2023-49255, a variance request on a septic system setback for a proposed single-family development at 9 Cannick Drive. If we could get the staff report, please. Mr. Joe?
So, there is no new information from the work session, but I'll go ahead and just give a brief summary of this zoning variance. So, the subject site is actually spanning three different parcels. There's lot 28 to the south, lot 27 to the north, and then the common property in between. This specific variance request would do away with the 10-foot setback requirement between the septic system and property line, so that this leach field could cross over the common property onto lot 27. We see these come through actually pretty often, but the variance here is required because these lots aren't directly adjacent, they are sandwiched by the common property. Staff would note, and this came through in the work session, that the septic tank is on the same lot as the primary residence, the leach field is fully contained on lot 27, it's really just the pipe from tank to leach field that traverses over common property. But as shown on the plot plan, this is part of a larger project by the applicant, who I don't believe is here. He's not here. But this is part of a larger project to construct a three-bedroom home. The lots are constrained in size pretty significantly. Lot 28 is just .239 acres, and similarly, lot 27 is just .258 acres. Standard lot size is .33. This variance has already received approval by the POA Association Board of Directors. All the legal notifications for this variance has been met, including the publishing and the weekly Vista and the public sign for this hearing. But based on this analysis, staff still offers no recommendation of approval, since the intent of this district is fulfilled with a single-family home, and it can still percolate for a one-bedroom residence. So I'll leave it up to you all to, I guess, assess the hardship here between a one-bedroom versus a three-bedroom residence, but according to the four points of a variance, staff has no basis for approval.
All right, any questions for the, for staff?
I have one.
Yes ma'am.
Is it appropriate for us to consider a request when the applicant does not appear?
I believe the applicant is actually here and can't figure out how to get in the building, is what I've been told.
Okay.
Doors outside automatically lock. Is there anyone?
Yeah.
If you're doing that, this is probably.
I remember when I got here, the first time I couldn't get in because the lock had a gate.
Can you talk to the gates about that?
It's all right.
Okay.
That's what I'm being told.
That's what's with the other.
Any other questions for staff on our staff report?
No.
All right, the applicant, if you would go ahead and come up to the podium. Yep, and staff just kind of went down their staff report real quick, but you go ahead and just kind of add on to it. Give us your name, please, sir.
So my name is Bart Hester, I'm here representing Apple Belavista, and we just have, as you see, two lots that are, I guess they're adjacent, but there's some POA land in between them. And we worked diligently over the last few years to try to figure out how to build on either lot. We just couldn't get a septic design even, well, more than a one-bedroom to work on either lot. So we've been going through a long process here to try to get the authority to cross those easements, the POA land with a sewer, with a sewer, one sewer line, and put the septic on one of the lots and the house on the other lot. And so we worked through the, through the POA to get their approval, and we've worked through the Health Department from the state of Arkansas, and I think, I believe our last stop is, if you guys would give us permission to do that, to, I guess, for a variance, to be able to cross those, those property lines. But we've been very diligent about trying to get lots on either side of both of those lots. We've, one, there's already a house on, the other one has a lot adjacent to it. We've tried to purchase that lot and have been unsuccessful with that as well. And there's just a large amount of POA land behind it.
Any questions for the applicant? I do have a couple of questions for you, just clarification, if you have a second. So the, the POA has signed off on the crossing of the, of the line of the common property, and then the Health Department's approved this already also?
That is correct.
And we, and we routinely allow people to build a septic system on one lot and a house on another lot. Really, the only real issue here is that they're crossing the common property?
That is correct.
Okay.
They have to share a property line?
Correct.
On the sides only, not the rear end?
Right. We, we did approve not too long ago, though, another something or rather, on another house that was built part of a septic system on POA property also, though, correct. I know it was an existing structure, but it was still?
Yeah, it had no regulation at all, the only object for that house to be used as a single-family home was that POA land.
Yeah.
Correct.
Okay. They did, they do just, they put the actual leach field on the POA land?
It crossed on the common land.
Okay.
I believe that was an existing house that had a malfunctioning septic.
That's correct.
So it was a little different.
A little different.
Yeah, it could not be used without that area.
Right. Okay. Any other questions or comments? All right, take the motion to approve it. Oh, sorry, go ahead.
I just wanted to say that you made some good, I mentioned some good reasons why we should approve this at the last, at the work session. And I was thinking I would agree with what you had said, but I, like staff, I don't think it meets our definition of hardship, so that's where I stand.
Yeah, I think it comes down to what's the definition of hardship?
Yeah.
You know, is the ability to have a family in the house, is that a hardship or not? Because a one-bedroom home is not for a family, that's for one person, maybe two.
And lots of market for that size house.
Yeah, I'm not a real estate agent, so I don't know. Anyway, I'll need a motion to approve variance 2023-49255.
Do you have a public hearing?
Oh, I'm sorry, yep. Thank you, Taylor. All right, this time we'll go ahead and conduct a public hearing. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to address this, the planning commission concerning this variance request? All right, scene nine, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Any other discussion or comments? All right, if not, we'll need a motion, please.
I make a motion, we approve the variance.
Got a motion from Farner?
Second.
Second from Portillo, call the roll, please.
Farner?
No.
Klessen?
No.
Portillo?
Yes.
Dool?
No.
Floyd?
No.
Ellis?
Yes. Motion is denied. I think you can get with staff, they can kind of tell what the next steps will be, or whatever there'll be. Thank you, sir. All right, next up, I show zoning variant 2023-49259 has been withdrawn.
That's correct.
Okay.
But because we still told the public in multiple ways about the public hearing, we still wanted to publish it out here, for those that may have shut up the public hearing.
Do we need to do anything other than just say it's been withdrawn? Mr. Kelly?
I'm still, was working on that last issue, I did not hear, this is, which item are you on?
C.
It was, the application was withdrawn?
Yes.
So you don't really need to?
All right. Next up, we have ordinance amendment, proposal to amend section 109, dash 42B1, add to section C, size of a permanent sign may be increased up to 10%.
I don't really have anything new to add, other than what was talked about at the work session. This is the request of the mayor to give staff a little bit of administrative authority over minor adjustments to permanent signs, because as of right now, nothing in the sign code has any staff authority for any consideration. So any adjustment, minor or not, must go to you guys, which is a 42-day review process for a request, whereas other structures or other projects can be administratively varied through staff, however, for some reason, that entire article cannot be done. So at the request of the mayor, I'm here tonight recommending a recommendation of adding subsection C, so we can consider permanent sign size increases up to 10% of what the sign is. Similar to how we do with building height right now, like I can vary a height up to 10%. So I'm still within that boundary of administrative authority.
All right, any questions for staff? I think this one came out of the request out of the mayor's office, correct?
Yep.
Okay.
Is there any consideration to be given on why, is it an automatic approval of the 10%, or are there criteria that you must consider that would allow you to?
We have more criteria than you guys do for our minor variances. I believe Megan might have touched on that, maybe read them to you verbatim at the work session. I believe we have four, maybe five, off the top of my head, items that we have to meet. So the three that you have, and then one or two extra for us to approve a minor variance.
Is that, that's not the packet, right? Or am I just not quite?
Let's see. Should we publish it?
They are in there.
I was gonna say, I thought I included the whole administrative section.
At the bottom of page 51, it's gonna be subsection B3.
Yeah, so we have five items that need to be met before we can approve something.
Since this is an ordinance change, we'll go ahead and conduct a public hearing. Is there anybody in the public that would like to address the commission concerning this ordinance revision? Scene nine, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing and take it back to the commission. Any questions or comments? If not, we'll take the motion to, send this on to city council with the recommendation to adopt.
I'll make the motion to recommend this to the city council.
Got a motion from Klessen?
Second.
Second from Lloyd, call the roll, please.
Portillo?
Yes.
Farner?
Yes.
Floyd?
Yes.
Dool?
Yes.
Klessen?
Yes.
Ellis?
Yes. All right, we'll send that on to city council. The other three items have been withdrawn, dealing with the law office on parcel number We're being told we'll see it again sometime soon?
On August 14th.
So, okay. So that takes care of everything under new business. Do we have anything for open discussion?
Not yet.
Oh, yes. Thank you for reminding me. Congratulations, Ms. Robertson has been promoted. You'll have to remind me what your title was, is now?
Planning manager.
Yeah, planning manager, senior manager, so good job.
Good job.
And, and we did talk at the work session, I know everybody else from that conference left Megan here to do everything by herself about amending our process for bringing projects before the planning commission and making sure that they're ready to come before the planning commission, since the state decided not to adopt the 60-day mandatory review cycle.
Which we already have that, our code already had that set for us.
Yes, that's why we want to get rid of it.
Okay. I guess we can talk about that now, just because, I mean, I have Megan's excellent note in the recording. But just to clarify, because where staff is right now, we already have what the final complete submittal on our code, lot 7225. I'm just wanting like a clear direction, right? You guys are pushing more for like, it must meet code.
They, they need to either have addressed all the staff comments or asked for the appropriate variances or waivers before it's considered ready to come to our work session.
Before, okay, before we, for like a large scale or something that depends on that?
Yeah.
Incidents?
Yeah, and quite frankly, we, we also like to see staff or the city adopt an escalating review scale, so like after the third submittal, you start paying re-review fees and escalate the each recent middle. Almost every other city in northwest Arkansas adopted it, but I bet if we did the math on how much we paid on this one project that's been reviewed to Garber, it way exceeds what we've been paid in review fees, probably by a factor of 10, I'm guessing. And that shouldn't be the citizen of Belavista's responsibility to pay for his inability to do his job. Yeah, I'd put that on TV.
So planning these areas, we can look at that? We will look at altering that acceptance for planning, maybe like a development calendar to make it do as well? Do we have anything on that?
I think, I'll need to look into it, but I think, I don't know what our current language says, but I think if we define a complete submittal, in other words, we say, a submission is not complete and deemed submitted until it contains, whatever, or it shall not be deemed to have been submitted until, call this submitted. That way, a clock doesn't even start until that person will submit, and that way you don't hit the items on the agenda.
Yeah, are we, are we even required to have a clock?
I think you probably need to have a clock, because by having a clock, everyone knows what the expectations are. If you had it open-ended and never had really any legal deadline, you could end up with some constitutional problems, I think, if you didn't.
Okay.
I think the guideline also supports staff sometimes, too, because if there is a timeline that's also not just for staff or you guys making a determination, it also helps push that, get that complete submittal from the applicant to, typically with our current process, because right now, like trying to get them to meet code and things like that, but if we were to change, like we're not even gonna, it's not even gonna hit the development calendar until you comply. That will change things, but currently, right now, the time, the timeline actually kind of helps staff.
Okay, fair enough.
Subject to change.
All right, that's all I've got. Anybody else? Yes ma'am?
Just, just a comment, and it's probably the realtor in me, but when there's mention as to a variance because it would accommodate families rather than single people, the realtor in me starts waving red flags as that being possibly inappropriate or discriminatory. So I just wanted to express that that is a concern that I have.
I think that's exactly correct, and I'm not, that does not prove hardship one way or the other, it's really not relevant to the factors of variance. So, I think, I think you're right. Thank you for that.
Small update, I think it's getting closer for a zoning code, development code reform. We're in the interview stage right now, so we're getting closer, hopefully getting that project rolling and starting public engagement and all that good stuff, so just a little update from staff.
So you selected the?
Top three.
Top three?
The top three, and we're in the interview process right now.
When do you think the interview process will be over?
After Monday, what is that, Monday? Not next Monday? After Monday the 19th? Hopefully before we see you guys again. We've got, we've got something going.
Hmm, interesting. Do we know how long this process will take? Do we have any idea?
What do you mean?
For the, going through all the public hearings and?
Oh, with the engagement, all that?
Yeah.
All the RFQs that we've been giving, we requested a timeline in those RFQs, they've ranged anywhere from like 17, 18 months all the way to 22 months. So it looks like the average for all the proposals was around, you know, 20 months for this process.
I, I think, and that just gets you to a draft of the planning commission, gives us a good, roughly.
Well, this is from public engagement to adoption, all of theirs.
Oh, they're, they're going all the way to council adoption?
Yep.
Oh, yeah, that's, I was gonna say a couple of years, that's probably.
Yeah, it's a long process.
Yeah. I think, obviously, time to get it drafted and then for you all to determine what you want to recommend, that's a process that will take time and necessity, because it's a complicated project.
Go ahead, ma'am.
I think it is going to be important that the city council know that this is in the works, because it could end up being, okay, here's this thing, and once it gets to the council, it might go for a very long time, if there's not a lot of communication and knowledge about what all the process is and what we're trying to do. I really don't, I'm not trying to, to make any comments about anything, I'm just saying, being realistic. We can chew on things a long time, so we need to be ready, it could take a while.
Yeah, I mean, it's, this won't be an easy process, for sure.
And all of the RFQ proposals too, a lot of it was heavily focused on public engagement, stakeholder discussions, so like I said, to you all, staff, and of course, the public. So hopefully there will be excellent communication when the process starts, that's the goal. With whole city of all, we love, you know, we love for thousands and thousands of public participants to do this on, so.
The, the, as, as we went through many years ago, the confusion which will arise?
Yes.
Because of our unique stats around here and all the private regulations and that will, are unaffected by any of this, and what, what we can do and what that means privately is the biggest challenge.
Yeah. It'll be fun.
It'll be fun, that's what I'm saying, it'll be fun. It's already been fun.
How long have you been working on this so far?
February or March? So, you know.
Yeah. I know it's been talking about longer than that, but?
I know. I'm ready, we're all ready to get it going.
Okay. All right, anything else on open discussion? All right, with that being said, we've got a city council work session on Monday, June 19th at 5:30 PM. City council regular meeting will be on Monday, June 26th at 6:30 PM. We will have a work session on the 29th at 4:30, and our regular meeting will be on July 10th at 4:30. That withstand a juror? A juror?
A joint?
A juror, a joint, a juror, whatever. Adjourned, adjourned, whatever.